Good evening everyone and welcome to our board meeting of January 22nd. Please stand by superintendent, read us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to thank everybody for coming out in this crappy weather tonight. Hope it doesn't get too mu- bad. Let the record show that all our board members are present tonight, please. Who will the minutes of the regular meeting of January 8th need a motion, please?
Support Swift.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. School appreciation. Turn it over to our superintendent, is that what you're doing?
Actually, Mr. Rice is going to take care of that for us tonight.
Hello and welcome everybody to, um, school board appreciation night here at Roseville. As you've seen, if you have, um, one of our handouts, this is school board appreciation month. Our school board members work year round to make sure that our kids and our teachers and everybody that, uh, is, uh, in our district has what they need and, uh, they do a lot for us. A lot of it is thankless, a lot of it is, uh, without fanfare, but tonight we get to have a little bit of fanfare. And so, uh, we will be recognizing, uh, each one of our board members individually. So let me just tell you real quick how this is going to work. I know everybody has kids here and, uh, those schools will be coming up one at a time. I'm going to ask if you would, uh, when the kids are done, they're going to go back to the room that they were sitting in and they'll be with their principals, there'll be somebody in there with them. If you could hang out until we're done doing all seven board members, then the board members will speak to everybody real quick and then they're going to have a recess. So then, at the recess, if you want, everybody will get a chance to, to have a minute to leave the meeting and then they'll finish the rest of their business. So, um, if we could get you to stay instead of leaving when your kids are done, I'd appreciate it. It really doesn't take that long. So, without further ado, um, I'd like to get started. The first on our list tonight is, uh, Mr. Joe D. Felice and he is being honored by Eastland Middle School. And Mr. Robert Biato, the principal, is here with some kids. So let's hear it for Mr. D. Felice and Mr. Biato and his kids.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Good.
Before we, uh, talk about Mr. D. Felice, I would like to again thank you, thank to the board. I appreciate all you do. I know sometimes it's not an easy job making decisions when it has to do with contracts and budgets and discipline. So I appreciate everything that you do for the Roseville community. So, I was going to talk about Mr. D. Felice, but you know what? I have some students here that are going to talk about Mr. Joe D. Felice. So, one of them is very special in his own heart, it's his own son. So, what a better person to appreciate. And, uh, here you go Joey, you can introduce yourself.
I'm Joey. I'm Joey D. Felice.
I'm Kelly Rakowski.
I'm Evan Hubbard.
We would like to thank Mr. D. Felice for donating money for the Be Nice Awareness Game.
The program works to promote kindness among districts by talking about the effects of being nice. We strive to make places more welcoming and, welcoming and open.
As the president of the National Junior Honor Society, I'm very grateful for this donation. You have no idea how much this helps us on multiple levels. It's going to help us jumpstart into a great program at Eastland Middle School.
Again, thank you for donating money for the Be Nice Awareness Game. Be Nice will be able to continue to grow, thank you again.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. We also have a shirt, we have a shirt. We have our Be Nice shirt and we have a card for you. Not only has Mr. D. Felice, um, giving, um, some money to help some of our programs, he is also just a, um, a parent that I can call, um, to help come into the school. He also helped us for our trunk or treat. And not only did he come for our trunk or treat, the man brought a tractor. Huge tractor from, was it John Deere, was that a John Deere tractor?
It's a front end loader.
Yeah, a front end loader, I mean it was huge, it was fantastic. So he goes above and beyond. So, again, I would like to thank you for all you have done for Eastland.
Thank you very much. This is a, this is a nice night, I appreciate all this, but really, the important people here are the students and the parents that make this district nice. Keep up all the good work, parents and, and, and the kids, you guys do a tremendous job. Over the holidays with all the, uh, the band and everything from the middle schools and the high schools, it's just unbelievable how good the kids do. We're very great, I'm very grateful to live in this city and I'm very grateful to have all of you. Thank you.
One other thing, real quick. The, the students up here are members of our Be Nice Crew and our National Junior Honor Society. And, um, we are having our Be Nice Game on February 8th. We're going to promote our, um, our, our program. And again, Be Nice is just being friendly, um, about being nice to everyone, treating everyone with respect. I'd like to thank Ms. Morgan and Ms. Riley for all they have done for this program as well. And they are somewhere back there, there they are waving. So, uh, once again, thank you all and thank you, Mr. D. Felice.
Thank you, and we have a nice, uh, certificate here for Mr. D. Felice and congratulations and thank you very much, sir. And thanks teachers for organizing that and doing that, we know that's extra time, we appreciate it. Okay, next, uh, on the list is Mr. Matt McCartney, if you can come down here, Matt. And we have, from Roseville Middle School, Mr. Chris LaFevre, the principal, and here you go.
Thank you very much. We met with my, uh, leadership team and a bunch of the students. We were trying to think of a way to recognize a board member because we explained what you did and everything and how we would recognize you. So you could imagine the ideas that they had for what I should get you. I will throw a couple out there, but we settled with a different one. Well, they mentioned some stuff for a cellphone, there was a PS5 and there were some other stuff, but we're not going to mention them because there's younger kids here. So I did tell them my budget and they came up with a couple more little better ideas that I could actually afford. And you know, in middle school, there's probably, there's two really important things you got to have, right? Shoes, that's the first one, but I can't afford the shoes. So we didn't get shoes. But I could afford the shirts they said, because they always mention, you know, you got to be proud of where you are and they're proud to be at Roseville Middle School. And one of those reasons is all the work that you guys do. So, this is not a PS5, this is not a cellphone, and they're definitely not Air Forces. This is the next, next way to look. I think I outdid them. It's way better than Eastland, right? So there's two of them, um, one is for you, you'll figure out which one that is, and the other ones is for Mrs. McCartney. Second one is. So now you can represent your favorite middle school. Don't forget your decal for your car as well.
Over the last, uh, thank you for saying, thank you so much. The last, uh, few years, I've noticed that the, some of the quality of the shirts that we have or whatnot, they're really, they're, you know, not too shabby. Proud to walk around as a Roseville Middle School honoree, right? Um, again, uh, as Joe said, this is a wonderful night. We all look forward to it and it actually brings a little warmth into this, uh, into the winter time for us. So thank you all, parents and students for all you do and of course to the staff, very good job. Thanks, Chris. And here's your plaque, there's, there's that.
Thank you so much.
Little handshaker, yeah, thank you, sir.
When was the first time, 2010?
2010, I, as a, as a principal at Roseville Middle School, my first year as principal there and, uh, Matt's first year on the board, uh, I did his presentation here. And, uh, it was kind of neat because that was my first one. And I didn't have any students with me either, that day, so. Thank you. Okay, next up is, uh, Mr. Switnowski, if you want to come on down, Kevin. And, um, we have Patton Elementary here. And there's a lot of people from Patton Elementary here. Including the principal, Mr. Brandon Kamrowski, if you guys want to come on out and I'll let you do the introductions and the show and everything else, so.
Hello everyone, welcome. Uh, like you said, we are Patton Elementary, I'm Mr. Kamrowski, the principal of Patton. And I have Mr. Houghton and Ms. Belicky here who, uh, put this together with their students. And I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Houghton and he'll explain kind of what we put together and then we'll go through and have the kids introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Mr. Houghton, so we combined with our first and fifth grade reading buddies. So we worked on, can you guys get your, please? We worked on painting this crate together. And then Ms. Belicky's first graders compiled these, um, thank you flowers, we made a bouquet out of that. And then my fifth graders worked on giving a helping high five.
And then I, uh, talked to someone, a little bird, and they told me some things that Mr. Switnowski likes. So we got you some things in here and then on the way, we stopped and, uh, we know that you like cannolis, so we got you a couple cannolis there, so. You can hand them to them. So I got them in a place out in Richmond, so, on the way down here today, so. So we'll see, but, uh, so we had the students put this together and like I said, we got a T-shirt for you, a Patton T-shirt for you. You can come over here and look at your, uh, little crate we put together with your flowers. Kids got pictures behind them, got you some cookies, some chips, you heard you like chips, and some dot pretzels, so, put a little crate of snacks together for you.
Hi, I'm Anthony. Mr. Switnowski at Patton Elementary, we wanted to send you a big colorful thank you. Thank you from all of us. Thank you for being an awesome person on the school board who helps make Roseville great. Your decisions and hard work make a big difference.
My name is Avery. Thank you for all that you do for us, school. We appreciate all for your hard work. We are lucky to have you.
Is that it? Well, thank you very much, guys. As the other board members have said, this is probably one of my favorite nights. There's a couple others, we have the high schoolers coming, uh, later on in February, right? Yeah, February. But, uh, this is probably my favorite night, just, uh, being able to, uh, you know, to appreciate all the kids coming up and doing this for you. First off, why don't you say your name and who you're here with today, okay?
My name is Darius. Mom and Dad.
My name is Kyle. Dad and Mom.
My name is Anya. My name is Anya and I live with my dad and mom.
My name is Avery and I'm here with my auntie and my mom.
My name's Audrey and I'm here with my mom.
My name is Anthony and I'm here with my mom.
Well, once again, thank you guys, I really appreciate it. Thank you for the gifts and the, uh, sign there and definitely will enjoy the snacks that you brought. So once again, thank you, thank you parents for keeping them active and keep that up, so, thank you. I'm here with my lovely wife, my granddaughter and my daughter. Thank you, thank you again. Yeah, yeah, with me. Thank you very much. Way to go kids, great job, thank you. Next up, we're going to honor, uh, Michelle Williams Ward, so Michelle, if you can come, come down here. And it, it looks like, uh, we are going to have the Kaiser Elementary, uh, kids and principal come in, Ms. Kelly Greider, and I think she's got some teachers here with her and all kinds of fun stuff going on here, so.
Alright, good evening everyone, I am Kelly Greider, principal at Kaiser Elementary School. And we are here to honor Michelle Williams Ward I brought with me tonight. This is the green team at Kaiser Elementary. So this is a group of students and teachers. I wanted to acknowledge Terry Simons and Sarah Breitner. If it wasn't for them, the green team would not be possible. So these students work diligently, they stay after school to make sure that our school is beautified. They do a lot of recycling, planting of trees. So they do a lot of things to make our school look more beautiful and more environmentally. So they have a special gift for you tonight that they wanted to present to you and is in honor of the green team. And the group was standing outside waiting to come in and honor you. Of all places, they're over the koi pond, like checking out the nature. So that did not surprise me, I said photo opportunity right there. So, um, we wanted to thank you for all that you do. We know, how many of you recognize now Ms. Williams Ward from being in our building? Do you remember her? So we know that you've come out to our building to read to us and to just visit with us and spend, I know that you were part of our painting of our kindness mural on the back of our building, so we do really appreciate your involvement in our schools as well. So thank you for all that you do for all of our schools in Roseville, we really appreciate you. Do we want the students to introduce themselves first? And who they came with? So you're going to say your name and then you're going to say who you came with tonight.
My name is Alexa and I came with my mom.
My name is Jordan and I came with my mom.
My name is Isabel and I came with my mom.
My name's Ethan and I came with my mom.
My name is Greg and I came with my mom.
My name is Constantia and I came with my mom.
My name, my name is Dylan and I came with my dad.
Raise your hand, dad. Could you, Dylan, could you read what's on? So, because they're so appreciative, nature and earth, they wanted to give you something that symbolizes, something that's very special to them. Dylan, do you want to read what's on there, on the outside? On that plaque? We have a lot of crafty teachers at our school as well. Christina Davis, one of our teachers, designed that shirt for you. Give your children tools to grow and wings to fly. And if you turn it around on the back, that's our kindness mural that's painted on the back of our building. Do I pass this to you now? Thank you so much, I love everything. And just to let y'all know, I love, love, love plants, I have them everywhere. So this is like perfect, thank you so much. And I want to thank the parents also, um, because without you, what would the kids be doing? We appreciate everything that you do. And the teachers, oh my goodness, we really appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, way to go, great job everybody, good job Kaiser. Okay, next up, we have Ms. Ayudo, Gina, if you can come down and, um, I'll wait till they get out so we don't have any big collisions in the doorway. And we, and we have, uh, Dr. Joe Troba from Fountain Elementary and he's got a crew here with him. And as they come in, I will make myself scarce, so. Trying to figure out which one you're giving me.
Good evening everyone, uh, my name is Dr. Joe Troba, uh, principal over at Fountain. Super excited to be here tonight, thank you guys for coming. We are here to, uh, recognize all the hard work and dedication of Ms. Gina Ayudo. We have several students here, we have, well, I'll let Maddie introduce the rest of the crew here. We do have a, a gift, uh, token of our appreciation. Maddie told us all the fun things that you like, so we had inside information, we couldn't screw it up, so. Without further ado, I'm going to pass the mic to Maddie.
Hello, so this is Fountain second grade class. This is Ms. Nitro, our music teacher, and then this is Dylan, Sironi, Sironi. Sione, TJ and Amor. We will be singing a very special Disney song, "Do You Want to Build a Snowman?"
Alright, so I, by the way, Maddie, you buried the lead, this is your mom, by the way. Not only a wonderful board member, but her mom, so, um, I'm going to have the second graders introduce themselves and then just point out your parents too, okay, in the crowd.
I'm Emily. Over there.
So shy right now, not so much in school.
I'm Tristan, but I like to be called TJ and my mom, my mom's right there.
This is also new information. I think Tristan is in his teenage years now, TJ, okay.
My name's Sione.
Another shy one, jeez. And our last but not least.
I'm Dylan.
Oh yeah, we already knew that because you told them to stop, I don't know, doing something. Thank you guys, appreciate it, thanks Ms. Ayudo, appreciate you.
And let me open this, thank you very much, Madeline, for making a guest appearance. You know, you were saying with the second graders, but Madeline is a fifth grader at, um, Fountain, of course. A little Starbucks cup, some bracelets that look a little, are these from Ms. Oravec? That's so cute. Ms. Oravec, um, Madeline's old teacher, has a, a Taylor Swift themed classroom and some other themes in there, but, yeah, you know, whatever. So thank you guys very much, thank you for coming out here on the snowy night to see me Frozen songs. Yeah, I do love Disney and everything else and thank you very much, um, parents and everybody out here today. We really appreciate it, have a good night.
Thank you very much Fountain, Gina, if you want to come, uh, get your certificate. Alright, thank you very much, and now, um, next we have Denise Brun. So Denise, if you can make your way down here. And, um, to celebrate Ms. Brun, we have Dort Elementary and their brand new principal, Brenda Baker.
Good evening everyone. So we have some friends here from Dort who are here to present some things to Mrs. Brun.
Hands down, you're the best.
You are sensational. Thank you for always lending a hand when we need it.
Thank you for your commitment to all of us.
It would be unbearable without your help. Thank you for pushing to us to reaching for the stars.
It takes a big heart to deal with us.
I'm London. And I'm with my mom and Ryan.
My name is Lucy and I'm here with my mom and my dad.
I'm Opal and I'm here with my mom, my dad and my sister.
I'm Ruthanne, I'm here with my mom and my dad.
I'm Sammy, I'm here with my mom.
Well, thank you guys, it was so nice and, um, I think Mrs. Baker had intended to put on here, "It takes a big heart to deal with my husband." husband." I'm going to hide these from him? No, I was fully expecting a traffic cone tonight, but...
So, Mrs. Baker and I go back quite a ways. She taught my daughter way back when, and thank you all very much. You're all so sweet. Thanks for being a part of this evening.
I appreciate it. And, parents, thanks for bringing them out. It's very much an honor to be here. Thank you.
Last but not least, we have Ms. Teresa Janey, our board president, to be honored by Ruth Green Elementary students, and they are with their principal. I had to wait so there was no collision again. Ms. Donna Ambrose is here, so Donna, come on up.
Mrs. Janey, I have members of the Kindness Club here with me today, and they're going to present you with a couple of things. And first, we're going to have, this is Maya, and she's going to read you something real quick.
Good, good evening, Ms. Janey. We are members of the Kindness Club at Green Elementary. We want to thank you for be- being our school's board president. We also want to thank you for all your hard work in helping to make Roseville Community Schools a better place.
Who do you have with you?
Mom.
Okay. Wait, wait, stay over here. Stay over here. Where's mom? Where's mom? Kayden is giving you, our art classes made you a canvas to hang in your office with a saying on it. It says, "An educator's kindness is the curriculum that shapes compassionate hearts where learning and empathy unite to nurture a better world." And all of the art classes worked on this, and it's signed by... This is Kayden. Hi, Kayden, how are you? What grade are you in?
2nd.
What grade are you in?
8th.
Okay, Kayden. Kayden, who's with you today?
Mom.
Where's mom? Okay, okay. And then we have you go next. Go ahead, Maya, introduce yourself. This is our reader.
Hi, this is Maya. I'm Maya. I'm in 3rd grade, and my mom is over there.
Thank you. Good job. Okay, and then we have a very special person. Oh, what's this?
To thank you guys. We made these in kindness club.
Oh, that's really nice. And this is very, very special. Aria, why don't you tell Mrs. Janey who your great-grandmother is? Oh, I think I know. I can tell that smile. So, she wanted to come and present to you today, and she says that is my grandma's friend, so...
Yeah, yeah, she's got some down there.
Who's with you today, Aria?
My, my mom all the way in the back waiting.
She is. Hi, she's sitting back there. Oh, very nice. So, we just wanted to say thank you for all you do, Mrs. Janey, so... Did you cry today? When we come and read you, read, read, you must come on up, right? Oh, yeah. So, we'll come and read again to you guys, all right? But thank you so much for coming out on this crappy night. I don't like snow or rain, but thank you, teachers. You guys did a wonderful job, and administrators, I don't know what we'd do without you guys. Thank you very much. And our police officers in the city, they're always keeping an eye on all our kids and all of us, and we appreciate that. We're very lucky to have our own police department in our own city. This is my 36-year in Roseville Schools, and I get together every year in these kind of events like this, is why we do what we do. Graduation is the epitome of it all, but we do a couple of things during the year with teachers and administrators. We love the kids when they come, so thank you so much for all my stuff. Thank you, parents, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. If you can hang on one second, we'll have our recess in just one second.
Are we starting with me? Sure. Okay. Okay, just, thank you, everybody, for coming out again tonight. We really do appreciate you guys taking time out of your evening to spend with us tonight.
Same, right? This is a very special night, and it's nice to see so many shining, smiling faces. Thank you all very much.
Beautiful night. This is a nice night to be on the board. We have to make a lot of tough decisions, but this is a nice night. Thank you to everybody making this night happen. And thank you, Joey, for being here tonight. And I just want to thank the police officer for keeping us safe here tonight. And like Teresa said, they do a fine job here in the city for us. And I think that's all I have.
Parents, again, thank you for participating tonight. Continue to keep your kids active in the schools, and, you know, like everybody said, this is, you know, one of our favorite nights as board members. You know, yes, we do make tough decisions, but all of our decisions, we have you, your children, and you and mine, so please and welcome, thank you again for everything.
I just want to say thank you to everyone. This was absolutely fantastic. I loved everything that the teachers had the kids doing. Kids presented excellently. I just loved it all. So, thank you for coming out, of course, in this weather. We appreciate you.
I don't know what else I can add to that besides ditto, 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 but very much, thank you so much, and thanks for sharing your wonderful kids with us tonight.
I want to thank Kerry, Mr. Rice's secretary, for giving us all a gift, and it's a puzzle of different events that happened during this school year, of course, to put together 500 pieces. So, Kerry did a nice job. Thank you very much, Mr. Rice.
Good job, Kerry.
Administrators want to say anything, too, before we have...
Yeah, just a couple things. First of all, from the superintendent's perspective, it is so nice to have a board that works together. We are blessed to have you here working for us and keeping the kids at the forefront of your decisions. That doesn't always happen, folks, in every district. We are lucky to have them here. Couple reminders, Mr. McCartney, two at Eastland, one at Roseville Middle, so it leans a little purple and gold, so. And Michelle, that Green Team really starts to grow on you.
Oh, here we go.
And the Frozen Song is not going to modify my decisions on weather calls. Just saying. It warmed my heart so much, it looks like we're never going to have a snow day. And then, just a reminder, Ms. Brun, that this video is, I mean, this, tonight is video recorded for quality purposes and also so your husband can watch it, so. After the throw-down comment or whatever. Again, I'd just like to thank all of you for what you do, and there are, there are days that your job is not, not easy. We had some really rough times years ago, you know, when you had to make decisions on budgets that were just ugly for people. School closings, combinations, combining, and it's, it's not always a bed of roses, but today is, is what it's all about and those kids, so thank you for what you do.
I'm really happy that you stand behind this decision.
Especially snow days.
Little inside joke here.
Dave, you have anything?
Just thank you to all the parents coming out, obviously. Thank you to all the board members. You're always appreciated by us. It's good, it's good that you get acknowledged tonight. Good to see so many parents in the crowd. Usually, we're having these meetings to a fairly empty room. I do want to acknowledge three or four people in the crowd. You gentlemen and ladies with lion's gear on. Just want to say, oh, there's four, and this, this young lady with the hat is close enough to lion's colors to call it lion's gear. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. Lucky to have this community. Thank you for the board, thank you to parents.
Okay, Riya.
Just, again, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Thank you for bringing the kids. It's nice seeing some familiar faces out there, and have a good night. Thank you. Thanks to the board again for everything you guys always do.
Joey, you have anything?
Same thing they all said. Where's Kerry? Can we get Kerry real quick?
Kerry's right there. Stand up, Kerry. That's where he is.
Yeah, we go to a lot of meetings in the county, and we meet a lot of other board members and superintendents and conferences, and they always say, they always see us together. They say, "You guys have the best working board we've ever seen. You guys are always together, and you always..." We don't always get along, trust us, we don't. Our decisions are sometimes I don't agree. When it comes to the bottom line, we do what's right for the district, and we do it for this, everybody, so we want to thank you, okay? So, we're going to take a five-minute break. We get a chance to talk to everybody for a second while you leave, while, thank you for coming, and please drive careful, okay?